I'd like to call this legislative meeting of Chillicothe City Council to order. Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Truchel. Tatman.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Crowell.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Like to ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have nineteen items on the agenda, so I'm anticipating that the reports of committees will be pretty good, so let's start there. Reports of committees?
(Inaudible).
Oh, now, I'm doing ahead of myself, John, thank you. Actually, how are the minutes for you? You have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Bonner.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Accepted by Mr. Crowell. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Tatman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Now, we'll move along to reports of committees. Mr. Crowell?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, in Safety Service Committee, four items on tonight's agenda. Item number eleven is at first read, and is to accept and appropriate $2,640 in grant funds received from the David Mead Massey Fund. These will be for the Fire Department, pay for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors for residents. And this is an annual program that they do, so that they can get this started and protect our community. I will ask, at the appropriate time, that we please waive the three-read rule and accept these monies. And maybe get that to fix.
(Laughter) That'll be my next request, Dustin.
Number thirteen is a first reading, and is to amend Section 138.04 of the Codified Ordinance pertaining to the membership of the nuisance abatement board. What we want to do is make just a slight change, to remove the language specifying that the member serving on that board comes from the Safety Service or City Service Committee, and allow it to be any member of council. And so that we can move through our many nuisance requests that have been piling up while this has been moving through committee, I'm going to ask, at the appropriate time, that we please waive the three-read rule, so that we can get on to addressing the city's nuisance needs. Item number fourteen, which is to accept $1,161.31 reimbursement for the hazardous material containment performed by the Chillicothe Fire Department during the April 29, 2012 fire of Sherwin-Williams, at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three-read rule, so that we can accept these monies. And finally, item number fifteen, which is at first reading, and authorizes the acceptance and appropriation of $100 donated by Kelly Penner, in appreciation for her service she received from the Chillicothe Fire Department. We'd like to extend a thank you to Mrs. Penner for this generous donation. And I would also like to thank the Law Director's Office for getting item number thirteen on this week's agenda. It's very important, and I appreciate them rushing to get that ready for us. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Patrick?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Utilities Committee does not have anything on tonight's agenda. However, I did hand out the minutes from the two rate review meetings we had. I also attached graphs that Utilities Director Johnson had handed out at that last meeting. These graphs show the increase and decrease in cost for electric chemicals production treatment, cost and the amount of water and sewage treated between 2004 and 2013. I'd like to report on assignment number fourteen dash oh five, which was to update the existing sewer use ordinance. More time is needed on that. It appears that two chapters need to be updated, and that's just not the one. Hopefully, we'll have that next month. And I would also like to report on item number seven, which is the meth legislation. First, I'd like to make the motion to amend by substitution the ordinance.
Accepted by Mrs. Ames. Okay, the motion is to amend by substitution. Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Tatman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, it's amended by substitution.
Okay, thank you. And what that was, there were several, actually, three spots where we added after the wording Exhibit A to original ordinance number dash fourteen, and we added or as subsequently amended, and I want to thank Clerk Fosson for pointing that out to us. I would like to also say, in response to last Monday's review session, at which there were many questions asked, I do have two handouts that I passed out. The first one is a flyer from EPA about the local government's reimbursement program. This flyer explains how Chillicothe may be reimbursed for emergency response to drug labs. And the second one is a flyer from EPA. This talks about, first, the meth, a public health issue, gives some facts in there. And the second one is meth lab cleanup from the Ohio Department of Health with best practice guidelines. And in response to Mrs. Neal's question about the number of drug busts last year, Captain Bamfield told me there were twenty in Ross County. He didn't break it down any further. And then, finally, I would like to comment on the Chillicothe Gazette's opinion. That was in yesterday's paper. First of all, I think the title of the article says it all. Meth lab okay, but city looking out for itself. The Gazette agrees that the proposed meth law is okay, and then says that the city is looking out for itself. Isn't it the job of city council to look after the safety of the city citizens and to be fiscally responsible spending their hard-earned tax dollars? That is exactly what this proposed legislation does, that protects the neighbors, potential tenants, and future property owners from the dangers of clandestine drug labs. This ordinance is titled clandestine drug lab, so it covers future unlawful manufacturing of controlled substances, not just meth. The Gazette agrees that taxpayers shouldn't be saddled with the cost of the cost of neutralization and cleaning up private property. As I've said all along, rental property is a business, and making your business parking safe after clandestine drug lab has been found, the prop, let me start off, as I've said all along, rental property is a business, and making your property safe after clandestine drug lab has been found on the property is part of the cost of doing business. Why should the citizens have to pay to clean up your property so you can make more money renting it out again? I am a landlord also, and do I want to be faced with the possibility of paying to have my property properly cleaned up if it becomes contaminated? No. But then, when it is all said and done, I have chosen to be a landlord. I choose who I want to rent to, because these are my choices. This becomes my cost of doing business. Passing this legislation is the right thing to do for the citizens and the future citizens of Chillicothe. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any other reports of committees? Ms. Gray?
Thank you, President Reinhart. If I can read what I have, I apologize in advance to everyone. I forgot my glasses in home, so I can't read anything. The Human Resources Committee has two items on the agenda. Agenda item number seventeen, which is a first reading to add sections one, two, three, one, two, three point zero seven three titled Transportation Coordinator, and one, two, three point oh seven four titled Transit Administrative Clerk for the Codified Ordinances. And at the appropriate time, I will request to waive the three-read rule. And item number eighteen, which is a first reading on, first reading of an ordinance to amend Section Three of Ordinance Number eighty dash twelve, to designate the Civil Service Secretary's hours as 1,040 per year, and to add two Transit Department positions to the pay ordinance. And I may defer to Honor Finney if he wants to provide any background on that particular item. And I will ask, at the appropriate time, to waive the three-read rule in order to pass this particular ordinance as well. I would also request, or make a motion, not to read item number two, which is a third reading of an ordinance to create Chapter One, eleven sixty-eight of the Codified Ordinances, establishing the Chillicothe Downtown Development Commission.
May I ask why?
I believe that there needs to be further discussion, and I think and believe that the term limits need to be less with regard to the two years or less staggered terms. I think that the current makeup lacks diversity. I believe that it lacks balance. And this is a council that is to advise the, or commissioned to advise council, and it seems to be handpicked. And I'm not comfortable making a vote this evening.
Is there a second to the motion after this?
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Tatman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
No.
Okay, then the motion carries, and item number two will not be read.
That concludes my report.
Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhart. With all due respect to Mrs. Gray, I believe that if you had concerns like this, that they should be brought up in early time.
They were brought up, they were brought up at a previous meeting of the Development Committee, and they were not addressed.
Okay, I don't remember those being brought up, but I'll defer to you. Mr. Truchel has asked me to give his finance report in his absence tonight. Finance has four items on the agenda tonight. Item four is a second reading of an ordinance appropriating $25,000 into the flood wall, capital lands and building line item, for necessary maintenance on the flood wall and pump stations. This was inadvertently admitted from the 2014 budget. Because there are overdue bills, at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule and pass this tonight. Items eight, nine, and ten are all tied together. Item eight is the second reading of an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed $2,441,000 of notes to pay the cost of improvements to the city's water system, the Dena project. Item nine is the second reading of an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed $300,000 of notes to pay to the cost of acquiring two garbage trucks. Item ten is the second reading of an ordinance consolidating the two bond anticipation note issues to reduce expenses. I will ask Mr. Finney to go into more detail of this, because these are time-sensitive items. At the appropriate time tonight, I will ask to waive all three of these items and pass them tonight. Development has six items on the agenda tonight. Item two, we have motion not to read tonight. Item five is the second reading of an ordinance to approve the action of the planning commission to rezonate property at 171 East Fifth Street from older neighborhood's single-family residential, R3, to residential office, R0. The rezoning of this property to R0 is very compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The change will be granted with the understanding that if the property should ever be sold, or in any way change hands, it would revert back to the original R3 designation. A public hearing for this rezoning will be held at 7:30 PM on April 14, 2014, prior to the city council meeting. Item six is the second reading of a resolution to accept and support the citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs. This resolution is required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. It details how the city will undertake efforts to provide citizen participation during the community development process, and throughout the planning, implementation, and assessment of all CDVG and home programs undertaken by the city. This plan provides for maximum city participation and most efficient use of CDVG grant monies. Item twelve is the first reading of an ordinance to accept and appropriate $16,235.66 received as payment of a depreciated chip grant lien held by the city of Chillicothe. Frida Kreider received a chip loan to remodel her house at 442 Bellevue Avenue. The property has been deeded to her son Jeffrey Kreider, and so the payment has come due. There is no reason not to accept this money immediately, so at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule and pass this tonight. Item sixteen is the first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 139.05B of the Codified Ordinances titled Community Reinvestment Areas. This ordinance was created in 1981 and has been amended several times over the years, the last time being in 2011. The change that is being made this time is to increase the tax abatement maximum from 50% to 75%, and from 10 years to 15 years. I hold a Development Committee meeting where Donna Smith with the Community Improvement Corporation explained how CRAs work. CRAs are in place all over the state, are an important tool in attracting new companies to a location, or encouraging existing companies to make a new investment at their present location. The increases in this amendment more accurately mirror of CRAs being offered in other locations throughout the state. Item eighteen is the request to put a CRA in place for the Carlisle Building using the proposed amended numbers in item sixteen.
That's nineteen. You said eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nineteen, sorry. Item nineteen is the request to put a CRA in place for the Carlisle Building using the proposed amended numbers in item sixteen. The CRA will be under the Carlisle LLC, but the actual beneficiary will be a Dena Regional Medical Center. Because the lease between the two is a pass-through lease, all expenses, including property taxes, will be passed through to the leasing, which in this case is a Dena. I have one more thing I'd like to bring forward, and that is about the pending meth legislation. I know a lot of people don't read the Gazette, but there was an interesting editorial by Mike Throne in Sunday's paper. It was titled "Meth Law Okay, But City Looking Out For Itself." He acknowledged the months of work that have gone into this legislation. He went on to talk about the dangers of meth, the requirement of the property owners to remediate property, and our concern for health and safety of the first responders, as well as the safety of the future property owners. He was spot-on, and I applaud his conclusions without benefit of attending a single meth committee meeting. His editorial then became subjective as to the motivation of the committee, and said the city was looking out for itself as though this is a bad thing. It is actually the intent of this legislation. We are looking out for the city and all of its residents. We are constantly looking at ways of being good sponsors of the taxpayers' money. Using money from the general fund, of which a large part is income tax, to clean up a private property is not being responsible to the citizens. The property owner is responsible for the maintenance of his property. Here's an analogy. If you have a car, and you loan or rent that car to someone, if there's an accident, any criminal charges will be on the person who is driving, but the car owner is ultimately responsible for repairs to the car. Should residents' taxes pay for automobile repairs if someone damages your car? Of course not. It is the property of the owner. That's why people have automobile insurance. Likewise, responsible property owners have property insurance. Finally, Throne's editorial said that an unintended consequence of this legislation might be an abundance of properties going up for sale by landlords who may not want to deal with the problems the new law created for them. This new law does not create problems. It creates safe, fair solutions for problems caused on the property, for neighbors and for residents of the city. The numbers of properties, the number of properties a person feels comfortable managing while abiding by this legislation is up to the individual property owner. If an owner of multiple properties feels he cannot handle all of his properties, then it is clearly in the best interest of the property owner to downsize the number of properties he has. That would also be in the best interest of the city and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Parks and Rec Committee has one item on the agenda tonight. That's item number one, which is a third reading granting a resolution for Tulsa to use the city park in surrounding areas. An annual event. That's certainly good for our area. I hope we get a favorable bill when that comes around. Secondly, the Parks and Rec had a meeting last Wednesday. Very productive meeting. Dave Tanner was there, our new Parks and Rec director. We're making a concerted effort to really improve the ball fields and the condition of the annex and Yocanji Park. We do have capital money for this. We want to spend it. We want to get these ball fields up to, you know, standards and better, and to keep on improving them. With that in mind, we're having a work day, weather permitting, March 1st, Saturday, at eight o'clock. That is this Saturday. It could be postponed due to weather, but at eight in the morning, try as many as you can get down there that can, that'd be great, and bring a rake and shovel. And that concludes my report for Parks and Rec. And I will bring up one more point for the old City Services Committee that I served on last term. There's item number three, which is the third meeting updating the Codified Ordinance regarding taxi cabs. This has gone over pretty well from my understanding. Everyone seems to be on board, and I hope we get a favorable bill on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Any other reports of committees?
Ms. Gray?
Yes, sir.
I received from the Law Director's Office and distributed this civil service ordinance. Did you want to suspend the three-day receipt rule?
Yes, sir. Yes, I didn't get a copy of that though.
Oh. I, I sent it just by electronic transmittal, due to the fact that...
I thought you were going to bring it to council tonight?
No. Sherry?
I have a copy of it.
Okay, I did email Teresa and asked her to bring in hard copies tonight.
Oh, maybe I have one.
I bet she gave you more than one.
She's really good about that. Yeah, she sneaks things in here all the time.
Obdulied noted, and then therefore I will request that we entertain a motion, or I will, I'm giving a motion, that we suspend this three-day read-equal.
Do I have a second, pending a three-day receipt rule?
This is, Mr. Fosson, would you read that again, please?
The title is "An Ordinance Amending Section 131.02B of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, Relating to the Civil Service Secretary and Declaring Emergency." This is the ordinance that amends it to say it's 1,040 hours per year instead of being full-time.
This is item number eighteen.
And it goes along with item eighteen, which deals with the pay for the 1,040 hours. So this, this is a companion to item eighteen.
Because I don't have one that amended the pay ordinance, but I do have the one that establishes the...
Yeah, they've got the amended pay ordinance in their packet Friday, so all they need is copies of that one. I'm sorry, Sherry.
And I didn't introduce, because I didn't know if you had it or not, so I didn't want to...
Well, I didn't know I had it either. Apparently, I'm more prepared than I knew.
Mr. Fosson, will this be number twenty?
Yeah, it will be, yes.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to waive the three-day receipt rule and accept this ordinance as item number twenty on our agenda this evening. Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Tatman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, and this will be item number?
Twenty.
On this lengthy agenda.
And I promise to make it clear for plan. I'll ask to waive the three-read rule.
Okay.
At the appropriate time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other reports of committees? Okay, reports of officials. Mayor Everson?
Thank you, President Reinhart. First of all, I'd like to thank all council members for their kindness and condolences expressed during the past month or rather this past week. Your thoughtfulness is most appreciated, and I certainly appreciate it. It's just my pleasure. Second, I'd like to extend an appreciation for the city crews who worked unitedly last week to rid the streets of the ice and the snow buildup, unplug the storm sewers, so that we could minimize the effect of potential flooding by the overflow of the snow and ice, as well forecasted rain, which ended up not happening, but we got a plan and it worked, so hats off to the city crews for working all together on that. I would last, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Gray to, can you send me the list of issues that you have with item two, so that I can prepare a response for you? And then, I'd also like to, this evening, I sent out a public notice for a special council meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, February 26th, 6:30, to have a second read on whether item sixteen and nineteen are on tonight's agenda, so we can get the rest of the Carlisle Project rounded out. Last Thursday, the Drug Pass Force met. That's a combination of a lot of city and county officials, department heads, to address the drug issue in Chillicothe. At that meeting, we also had representative from Lieutenant Governor Mary Taylor's office, the representative, the local representative for Governor Kasich's office. We also had Orman Hall, the Director of the Government's Cabinet of Obeid Team, directly from Columbus, attended that meeting. And we laid out how we, our objectives, and how we're going to work to, among all the departments, to get progress with this drug issue, and got very good kudos from that by the state representatives that were there, saying that the approach that we were taking is the best one that they've seen. So looking for some progress with that, and ask community support to call the Police Department, the Sheriff Department, anytime they notice a drug deal going down. Also, the last Saturday, there was a drug drama at New Beginnings Church. Pastor Dave McGill led some of the parishioners there in a very impactful drama that deals with an actual case of a drug overdose death experienced during the first try of heroin by a young lady. And there, that is going to be traveling around the city, displaying at various forums to spread that message. It's a very impactful story, so I recommend you go to that when it, when it comes about. And then, finally, I'll have my State of the City address, March 5th, next Wednesday, at 11:30 at the Chillicothe Country Club. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Everson. Honor Finney?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Keep my comments brief in light of our busy schedule tonight. First, I'll comment on item four, which is an appropriation into flood wall capital lands and buildings line. If you'll recall, this is an item that the Engineering Department just left out of their request for last year's budget. I believe Councilman Crowell recommended passage tonight, although it's on a second read rule. I would support that, as I believe we have bills accruing. The next item would be items eight, nine, and ten, which are up for second reading tonight. But Councilwoman Ames has recommended passage tonight, and I also recommend passage tonight because of the time since the nature of these, they'll be going out next week. Item number eight is simply the maturing of a one-year note. We'll be paying the interest on that note, as we've discussed many times last year. It'll be next year that we start aggressively paying down principal on that water note. Item number nine is new money. First time in a year we've taken out new money, and this is to pay for two garbage trucks. As you'll recall, the budget, as of last year's budget conversations, we decided to put one new garbage truck into the capital list, but upon closer examination, there were significant cost savings, and really, the timing of purchasing two at the same time just made sense with the timeframe of building and delivery and that sort of thing. So that's, that's an amount not to exceed 300,000. So if they come in a little bit short of 150 each, which we would expect, then we don't borrow the full amount necessary. And then, item ten simply consolidates those two items into one issue. I also want to note, there was an article probably about a week ago regarding when we went out to get our rating for these notes. The city's bond rating was downgraded by Moody's. You recall, last fall, we received an A1 rating with a negative outlook, which essentially Moody's was saying, I passed out the tiers before, that sort of thing, but still a very, very good credit rating, but they said, based on... a very, very good credit, uh, rating, but they said, based on, um, trends such as, you know, our loss of local government funds, uh, those sort of things, and, and our inability to, um, cut costs as quickly as our funds were cut, they, they gave us a negative outlook. We've been downgraded one notch to an A-two, which is still a very good credit rating, but the silver lining is they've removed that negative outlook, based on some things such as, you know, the, the, the fund balance we ended the year with. And, um, I think what I referred to in the article was a bit of a stabilization. Knock on wood, but the state has cut and cut, and I, I hope that, you know, we, we've come to the end of those cuts. So, that, that, we shouldn't expect to see a significant, um, drop in interest rate. The reason we go to Moody's and, and get these ratings is to expand, uh, the bidding base, so we should still see very aggressive, um, bids, and next, next meeting, I'll be able to report where those came in. Finally, I'll report on item, um, eighteen, at the request of Councilwoman Gray. Um, these, these three, um, issues, one, reducing the Civil Service Secretary from full-time to part-time, and then the creation of two new positions in the Transit Department, were all considered in last year's budget. So, this is simply, um, these, these positions are being created to match what we budgeted for in the fall, and the reduction from full-time to part-time was also what we anticipated and talked about in the budget last year. But until, uh, until you tell me to do it, I can't, uh, can't, can't match the budget. So, with the creation of these positions, we can get the two people hired in Transit and get them working, and, um, we'll also be able to, uh, scale back the hours in, for the Civil Service Secretary to match what we had budgeted, uh, for all those departments. Unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Artur Feeny. Law Director.
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Um, the Law Director's Office is working with the Safety Service Committee to wrap up the legislation relating to, uh, secondhand dealers. Um, I just received some more suggestive language this afternoon, so we'll be getting that back to your committee soon. You'll notice that there's an awful lot on today's agenda. We'd like to remind everybody that we need about fourteen days to get legislation to us and get turned around. Um, you know, it's, it's hard to prepare a lot of this legislation on the fly. We try to do what we can when you come in with late requests to get them out there, but we just can't guarantee it. We have been providing another, uh, a number of legal opinions to law enforcement and city officials, and we just ask that when you, um, submit legal opinions, that you do that in writing, and that you do it on the appropriate forms. It also makes us keep on track that they've been received in our office, and it's also easier for us to keep track of them once we send them out of the office. We're in the midst of preparing, uh, and closing out the files and putting them in storage for the year two thousand and thirteen, and, uh, we're also working, uh, towards facilitating some additional training for law enforcement during the year two thousand and fourteen. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Artur Feeny. Uh, from the, from the chair, um, first off, Mayor Iverson from the chair would like to express our public indulgence to you and your family, and, uh, that you've been in our, our collective thoughts and prayers for the last week, and, um, and we're very sorry for your loss. Um, I also would like to, uh, to comment on the work with City Crews last week, um, in anticipation of the storm that was, we thought was hitting. Uh, Mr. Green, I want to thank your crews, um, the cooperation with ODOT and Charlie Orton and the county engineers. It looked like, uh, an army out there, uh, there in the middle of last week, getting those storm drains and the gutters cleared out. I do home care for the hospital, and I'm in and out of town, and I can tell you the difference in the progress between the morning and by noon, I felt like we were going to be on good, it's good firm ground, um, once, if, if the storms did hit, thank God the storm, that we didn't get the, the, the rain in the capacity that we anticipated. But had we, I, I think that the crews did a, a, a great job of, of doing that, the coordination with the other local government entities, that, that shows, you know, when the proverbial crap's hitting the fan, uh, how everybody pulls their boot strings up, and we can, we can work together to, uh, to, uh, serve the public. As well, I know the crews are out there now, the, the second task at hand is filling these potholes. Um, and again, another bang-up job to start, at least. I left town, uh, early Friday morning. By the time I came back late, uh, Pyatt Avenue looked like it had been carpet bombed, uh, with mortar fire all the way down, and by the time I went up, down Orange and up, Pyatt, uh, Pyatt Avenue was, was full. I mean, the, 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 the potholes are full, and I, I know there's plenty still out there, and the crews are busting their tails to do that. I'd, I'd encourage the public to, uh, get ahold of the Service Department where they, where you know potholes are, and, uh, they need to know they're out there before they can fill them. You might assume that the city knows that they're there, um, we can assume they're on about every street, but, but by all means, get ahold of the Service Department, get ahold of your councilperson, get ahold of me or whoever, and we'll make sure that that information's getting, um, passed along, so we can, uh, get these potholes, uh, filled up in a timely manner as well. I'd also like to thank, uh, Adena, my employer, and the Chesler Group for the, the finalization of this lease agreement. This is a huge deal. When I was on city council, I sat and watched that building across the street burn down in everybody's dismay. I sat on councils, uh, Mrs. Ames is Chair of the Development Chair, trying to push many different agreements through CRAs and, and, and different, uh, grants, uh, to get somebody to fix that building. Nobody, um, you know, the city couldn't afford it, and, and quite frankly, the taxpayers didn't want it, you know, uh, the taxpayers to do that. So this is a, a wonderful public-private, uh, partnership that's about to take place with a, a private development group that knows how to fix these historic buildings up, with probably one of the most rock, uh, stable, uh, employers in, in our region, being Adena Health System, and then the, the help of, of you guys, the city council, Mayor Iverson's office, uh, Law Director's office, City Engineers' office, the private, uh, um, Conservation Development Group that, that developed, through the process to get this done, and we're, we're moving forward. The lease agreement was, uh, something that was very nice to see. Um, I would like to, it, from the chair's point of view, please urge council support of these two important pieces of legislation to kind of finalize this from our end, and, uh, and so we can move forward, and hopefully come spring, see some bricks and mortar, and, and, and not see bricks falling off, but bricks getting put into that, that historic, uh, anchor to our downtown. And I'd also like to, uh, to thank, uh, Mr. Proll for bringing item thirteen forward, and urge the passing of that, so we can, um, change kind of how, how we appoint some things, so I can, uh, make sure that, uh, unless somebody else wanted to be the nuisance abatement chair, that Mrs. Patrick continue her, her wonderful work on that, in that important board as well, so... That's all I have from the chair.